She's not responding to my texts there, but I just sent my phone number to her. So if she can't hear us on this, she'll see that text and call us.
All right, I guess we'll open up this hearing. I'm Kim Nile, the chairman of this little council here. We've got three out of six of us here. We tried to schedule this before everybody got busy and we missed it by about a week. I'll give you a little history on this deal. The Department of Ag thought it'd be a good idea to have a council with an accompanying checkoff to do some work in corn research and marketing and education. And they went fishing for people to be on this council. And some of us, after we were told it'd be about one meeting a year, thought that wouldn't be too bad. That was a, our first meeting was in the 12th of November. And at the time, we decided on a good way to collect this if it went ahead and set a date for a second meeting, which should have been a year later, but it wasn't. And in the meantime, it came to our, we became aware of the fact that even though the way this council was created and it was moving forward corresponded to the letter of the law, it didn't necessarily correspond with the intent of the law for creating this, these councils and checkoffs. So we had the Department of Ag go back to the drawing board and do it so they responded, so that it matched the intent of the law, which then we had to send out a petition. And that's how it's supposed to work. The corn growers are supposed to, it takes 25 signatures on a petition to get something like this going. So we circulated the petition. We got all the signatures we needed. And now we're having a hearing, which is also required between the petition and the, and sending it out for a vote. So we're at the hearing stage now. And basically, this is, what we're looking at doing is collecting an amount of money that we can use for research and producer education primarily. And I think most of us agreed to be on this because we don't want to see money get collected and squandered or wasted one way or another without any tangible benefit coming from it. And I can guarantee anybody that's listening or here that as long as I'm involved in this, I don't foresee any money getting wasted. I've been involved in too many research projects over the last 20 years and overseeing them to, and I've seen too much money squandered. And if all we're going to do is squander the money, we can just toss this thing right down the toilet right now. So this is our third meeting already since November. I believe as Marty told me, it would be one a year. And now we're here to gather public comment from anybody that wants to comment on this thing one way or the other. The, we want to hear what anybody has to say. We'll start with you guys. We've got at least one person on the webinar. I better get back to my notes here before I forget where I'm at. We've got an example of this referendum we can hand out. You guys can go through it. While you're going through that, I'll let Ben cover anything that I forgot to mention. We've got to make sure, make sure we satisfy all the requirements of this hearing. And I'm going to let him handle that so that I don't get in trouble. So Ben?
Hey, guys, thanks for coming. My name is Ben Tiller. I'm the staff attorney with the Montana Department of Agriculture. And this is Marty Earnhardt. And she's in charge of the administration of this, of this council. So I'm here just to make sure that we provide adequate opportunity for, for public comment on this issue. We want to make sure that when we're talking about the issues before today, the issue, the issue before today is comment on the council and comment on the referendum, the petition and the checkoff and how that's going to happen. So we, let's keep our comments to those issues because that's what, that's what we're here for. At, Kim did a great job of kind of setting forth the changing laws. And so when this, this was set, this was set in motion early last year, in 2014. And during, during that process, some folks pointed out to us, hey, we would have rather you had done it this way. And, and so we said, okay, okay, we're going to do it that way. And then the legislative session started. And so a bill got introduced that changed a little bit the way these things were supposed to happen. And one of the things that's supposed to happen under the new laws is that we're supposed to take public comment on the council as well. So we'd like to get public comment on the council and also on the petition or on the checkoff as it's set forth in that referendum. So we're here to talk about the referendum. It, after the referendum, after the public comment on the referendum, the department along with the council will take that information into consideration to determine whether this referendum should go out. And the referendum will go out to everyone who's a producer or grower in the state of Montana. And then based on the votes that we receive coming back, either the referendum will either succeed or fail. If it succeeds, then there will be a corn checkoff implemented next growing season and, and the council will continue to do normal council stuff. If, if it fails, if the vote comes back negative, then the council will probably dissolve at that point. However, there's the chance it could stick around for another year to consider whether further action should be taken. So, let's see. Everyone will be given the opportunity to have a comment. And we're going to leave comment open through March 31st. So if there's other folks who have opinions that you know about and they would like to share it with the department, make sure they email us. We can be emailed at, well, you can, you can write to us on the, on the address that's on the back there. That's P.O. Box 200201 in Helena, 59620. Or you can email Marty at?
M. Earnhardt. And I'll spell that out. at mt.gov.
And so March 31st will be the official close of public comment on this hearing, but we're going to leave it open in case folks weren't able to make it. Because as Kim mentioned, it got busy this week. And we understand that some people might have wanted to be heard, weren't going to be able to make it. So this meeting was publicized in three newspapers. Northern Ag Network picked it up. And it's also been on our website on the front page with a, with a banner. So we've made sure we did everything we could to get folks out there. I, I think a lot of you guys are seed dealers. We, we sent an email out to the president of the Seed Dealers Association. Because seed dealers under this referendum are, would be treated as first purchasers. So typically, you have grain elevators with wheat are the first purchaser. The way this has been organized and what we'll discuss today kind of puts the seed dealers in the first purchaser. And we can talk about that and why that decision was made, if you have questions about that. So that's all I have to say. So I think at that. Mr. Nile?
We're open for comments.
And if we can just, just, sorry, I should have said this. If you can state your name for the record when you, when you give her comments, so we can write that down and have it on the record. Sorry.
Steve Church, Commerce, Montana. How many signatures did you have on this initial petition?
We've got 38 signatures. And they've been verified by the department as growers or producers pursuant to the statute.
Do you have a list of those 38?
We do, and that is public record. However, we can't give you the actual list. I can give you the list, but as it was written in, it's got everybody's personal contact info. I got to check the law on that and make sure, there's a restriction on mailing lists. So we can give you their names, happy to read their names. That's public, public information. So if you'd like to review that, we can definitely let you do that.
Okay, now, on this, you're saying that it's for research and for education. That's a pretty broad term. I see on here it's characteristics of commercial corn varieties. Well, they're not varieties, they're hybrids, guys.
Well, I wrote that. I'm not a, I'm not a farmer, so.
Okay, well, we got to be specific. The problem on researching specific hybrids is how long you think they last in the market?
Two years, maybe?
Yeah.
Two, three years. So that, that's not relevant. I think if something like this is, were to move forward, it has to be more specifically generated towards production management.
Steve, if, I'll read to you. Now, this is just, and these are good comments. And this will help us, this will help us determine what we put on the actual referendum if, if they do decide to send the referendum out. So all, all of these commodity advisory councils are run under section, which is 811-511 and 811-512. And the only guidance that you really have from the statute is the department shall adopt commodity research and market development programs. And so that's really, it's up to these guys and the producers to determine the policy and where the money gets used and what the focus of research is and that type of thing. So nothing that's set forth in the referendum or the law can, can really kind of pigeonhole you that, into that. It's ultimately a research and advisory committee. It has the flexibility of any other commodity advisory committee like the Pulse Committee or the Wheat and Barley Committee. So.
You know, my biggest concern is, we don't have a lot of acres of corn in the state. And most of the corn that is produced in the state is either number one, silage, about 65% of the acres, and grain, which is typically either consumed on the farm or sold to the neighbor. And, you know, if we were in that 200,000 to 300,000 acre range, I think it would be a lot more significant dollars coming in for the checkoff for research. I'm not sure we can generate enough money to do any valid research, to be honest with you. So it would probably be mainly towards education.
Well, the, the way this council's looked at it is, is there was a development component in this original, and there's a potential, a market development component. There's a potential for that to kind of still be there, I guess. But since we're a net importer of corn, we don't, we didn't really see any, any point in trying to develop more markets for a product that we don't make enough of already.
Right.
So we thought that there could probably be some valid research done in terms of, say, dryland corn production, sort of the do's and don'ts and the, and the parameters that, where it will work and where it won't work. And, and also maybe some variety trials as far as comparing different varieties. And I know they only last two, three years, but still, we all know there's, there's varieties that do better than other varieties. And it'd be, it'd be nice if the guy buying the seed had a side-by-side comparison from a non-biased source. And they're doing some of this already at Huntley. The trouble is, there's no money to do it with. He's robbing money from, from other places to do this and not, and not charging any of the corn, the corn companies to do any of this.
I hope they were charging.
They, they've, they've done it both ways, off and on. And the last couple of years, he's just let them enter them and, and run the trials and sort of robbed money from, from other programs to cover the costs. Is that a valid use of, of the research money that may be coming in? I guess I'm not sure. If we get this set up, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of around $100,000 to $100,000, $120,000 a year that would come in. If we have money coming in, then we can, we can have different researchers come at us with different proposals and decide whether or not that's a, a good use of the, of the research dollars or not. It's just like any other research program you've got. We don't need to be here as a retirement program for scientists so that they just keep their job. But if there is a valid need for it, it'd be nice if there was some, some money around to fund it with. And lots of times, if you have a little money to start, to fund something with, the good researchers will go out and, and use that as seed money to gather up more money. And you end up with more bang for your buck. Now, granted, this is, this is just looking down the road. And what the job this council would have would be to evaluate all this stuff. And, and is there, is there something worthwhile to do with this? And if not, then, you know, the money doesn't need to get spent until somebody comes forward with, with something that makes sense to do.
So 100% of the funds go towards research, not towards overhead?
That, we had this discussion early on here. And the Department of Ag, the Department of Ag typically charges about 8% to cover their costs. They're going to be the ones doing all the paperwork and keeping track of all the money and, and all that. I mean, I'm, I'm a full-time farmer. I'm not going to, I'm not going to do the accounting on this deal. And the thing is, and the discussion we had, was that there will be a cap on how much we're going to pay these guys to do this. I mean, if this thing blooms from $100,000 a year to a million a year, they're not going to get 8% of that number. That's just not going to happen. We're going to, we're going to figure out what it costs to administer this thing. And that'll be the, that'll be the top, it's not going to be an open percentage deal.
So I, if I can speak on that issue, Kim, being from the department, so the 8%, you know, 8% of $150,000, $12,000 bucks, what you would get from that, from the department, you've got staff attorney who manages all your contracts, makes sure everybody's complying with, with the contracts. You have administrator who deals with organizing meetings, public notices, all of that stuff. And you've also got an accountant who deals with, with getting the funds in, tracking the funds, making sure that they all can be audited, ensuring that anybody who wants a refund is able to get that refund quickly. So, so that's where the, that's where the administrative portion of it goes. It would be divided basically under those three categories. You'd have administration, legal for the contracts. Because we always entered, anytime we're in a, in a research situation with, with ag research, there's a contract. And so we've got a $2 million contract with MSU most years through Wheat and Barley, you know, and we monitor those. And so that's the legal aspect of it. So, and, and like Kim said, it's, you know, there's, there's, there's going to be a cap. The, the council sets the budget. And so if, if the council says, we want you to do this, 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 and this, and the, the Department of Agriculture really can't do it for that amount of money, that discussion occurs in a public meeting where everyone can be heard on the issue. But ultimately, it's the council that decides where that money goes. And they set the budget at their meeting. And it's a public meeting. It's usually the first meeting of the year. And as Kim would have it, be the one meeting of the year.
You guys kind of got thrown under the bus a little bit the very first meeting. Because originally, the Department of Ag foresaw this as anybody that sold corn would collect a fee on however much corn they sold and remit that to the Department of Ag to fund this thing. And all of us sitting around the table pretty much decided that if we had to keep track of this and send it in, this thing goes straight down the tubes right then and there that first day. And we hit upon the idea of collecting it based on, on seed that was sold as a, as a very efficient, practical, set in stone way of coming up with a good number. And granted, it's going to be a little work on somebody's part on the seed dealer end of it, but basically, you've got, you've got the numbers right there. It shouldn't take very long to, to look at that and come up with, with a total, way, way quicker than every single farmer out there selling a truckload of corn and having to keep track of it and send it in.
So how is that going to be audited?
Well, Steve, it'll be the same way that we audit the, any of the, any of the elevators that sell, that, that collect the Wheat and Barley checkoff. And the reason that this, this seemed like the right solution was because, you know, it's usually, it's the first purchaser under the statute. And so with Wheat and Barley, it's, that's the elevator. That's the first person who buys it off the farm. They, they make all those transactions. They send one check to us at the end of the month. And so we track it through that avenue. And so that, from an administration standpoint and then accounting standpoint for the department, that makes a lot more sense. It's a lot easier to track those few central locations than everybody selling a truckload of corn, so.
Okay, how are you going to track down all the bootleggers that come into the state?
We have a, we have a duty to, to make sure that folks are paying the, the checkoff. And so we, we do. I mean, I mean, we hear about it through, through channels like producer channels and that type of thing. And when we hear about it, we, we, we reach out to folks. It is not uncommon for us to say, you owe us checkoff money. Here are, are our powers under the statute and you need to pay it. It even grants the department a lien on real property if you fail to pay your checkoff.
Right, what I'm talking about, bootleggers are, I know there's guys from Minot, Wisconsin, that are driving up and down the road, selling out of the back of their pickup. I'll guarantee you, they don't have a seed dealer's license in the state of Montana.
Well, and those are the types of things we need, we, we need to hear about. And I think you guys have a vested interest in letting us know. Because we have folks who, who enforce the seed, seed dealers licenses as well. So, you know, just, we, last year, as far as, as our attempts to enforce checkoffs, I mean, we, we reached out to cherry producers under same situations and said, you know, a lot of those cherries, checkoffs were owed. They weren't going through a central location. And so we did, we found out every single one that we knew. And they got a letter from me saying, here are your obligations under the law. You need to comply. So I mean, we hear about it. Yeah, they did. They did. I mean, the ones that are going to do and the ones that, you know, aren't, aren't. And then they face the penalties.
At the last meeting, we talked about getting a list of all the companies that do sell seed.
Yeah.
And the department asked you about that.
I went on the website and it was, I was pretty disappointed because it has not been updated since 2010. Because I Google on and, and look up to make sure, obviously with our, all our seed dealers in the state, we want to make sure everybody's under compliance and has their seed dealer license. But I went under there and it was 2010.
And, and Steve, I appreciate that. And, you know, if you can, we always want to hear about that type of stuff. I mean, we take that enforcement seriously. And we got twice as many lawyers now as we did two years ago. Either that's a good thing or a bad thing. But it's the reality. So, you know, when you see stuff like that, let us know. Because I, we, we have a statutory duty to ensure that people are complying with the law. And we take it seriously, so.
So realistically, one of the side benefits of this, Ben, could be to tighten up this whole network.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good point.
I think you've got some guys in your area, one that cruise in from parts unknown.
Wisconsin.
Wisconsin, Nebraska, everywhere.
Yeah.
Big one, Bismarck, close enough. Bismarck, the mountain, Huntley area.
But Steve, I think as far as the variety thing, you know, trying to compare varieties, which, you know, like you said, the varieties change every couple of years. But I think there's more of a emphasis probably to education as far as, you know, it's, it's new to Montana. The guy down the street or, you know, three, three miles away from me at home doesn't have a clue how to raise corn. And I think that's one of the major emphasis.
You want to hear smart things like this. That, that ants in buildings. I guess, I'd see if you're going to do anything with this, if you're going to have variety trials, you've got applications. You can't just do it in Houghtley. You got to do it in Paisho. You got to do it here. You got to go up north and do the short season varieties. Because if you have Huntley one year, that doesn't tell you anything.
It tells you what happens at Huntley.
Right, right.
I mean, that's replication. And I mean, the seed companies for the most part probably take care of a lot of that. Dryland, that's a different game. We could probably, that's one area that the state is severely lacking. You go to an MSU meeting right now and mention corn, guess what they talk about? Weed scab. That's all they care about. It's because corn carries weed scab. They got to change that mindset if they're going to get any support from the guys on doing this research. Because can't get too enthused about going to these meetings and only row crop and talking corn. If it's not a disease or something, they're not really saying anything about corn.
Historically, all the research money has gone to Wheat and Barley, you know, dryland, period. Any, any row crop of any kind has been virtually ignored. And speaking from the sugar beet end of things, we've funded all of our own research for years and years and years. And, and otherwise, we wouldn't have anything. We wouldn't, we wouldn't know how to combat the diseases we've got or anything else. And it might be that in the state of Montana, the only way we're going to get any answers or get any research done at all is through something like this.
Dave, to add to what Matt was saying, you know, as I watch Pioneer's research group work, you know, some of the stuff gets so sophisticated. In their test plots, for example, they've got special equipment. You know, they can go in and, I don't know how many patterns they can stick in, you know, 30 minutes, but it's a loaded mine, okay? It's all specialized equipment, very expensive and sophisticated. And they also have a combine for a chaplain, harvesting, very sophisticated. You know, it's kind of like, there's so much difference in that and what they're doing with what they're trying to do like in Huntley, Montana, or Dryland, Georgia, Montana, whatever. I mean, it's like, are we spinning our wheels to here just let them do it? And that's where, that's where the real research is. It's just they get so much more done so much quick.
Are they doing any of it in Montana, though?
They're western, right now.
Which is not Montana.
I know, but.
Well, I know the university can buy the equipment because you're talking over a quarter of a million to Applemanville investment.
And you're not in the corn company.
Right, I know.
Right.
Which is, which is one reason we're looking at something like this. Because nothing is done with Montana in mind. We're just, we're a leftover kind of, we get what might, may or may not fit here. And it's the may not that bothers us.
Well, not necessarily. Because we do a lot of research in Lethbridge on short season hybrids. The company's invested a lot to short season dryland, looking at drought tolerance, you know, any diseases that show up, et cetera, for this area.
Is that just a long company, though?
I, I don't know what, you know, I'm not going to speak for other companies because I don't have the internals on the other companies. But Pioneer has a huge investment on short season hybrids. The key is, is the education. This guy right here probably puts out more literature for dryland growers to help and get started anywhere. You know, I have a daughter in crop sciences at Montana State University, but she brings out corn to change the subject time. You know, and she has, obviously, she has a big interest in that. She does summer work for us and she gets frustrated. It's not that the professors don't want to go there, but she kind of has to force the issue. And I talked to Dale's younger brother, Bart, said he was there too. And it was all about Wheat and Barley and nothing else counted.
Because they didn't have the money for it to do it.
Well, it does, that's not an excuse. Corn's been grown in the state of Montana since the early 1900s.
But there's been no producer group to help fund any research.
True.
I mean, the only, the only research that gets done in Montana now is funded by the beet grower groups. Why there wouldn't be any beet research being done? I mean, it's such a, a small crop that it's, I mean, it's, it's not going to, they're not going to gravitate to it because there aren't that many acres. So if you want anything done, and granted, maybe Pioneer is doing all this work and, and is, is giving us answers. But how many other seed companies are there selling seed in the state that aren't doing anything? And they say, okay, here's this dryland variety, the work's good for you. And does the average guy know whether it's been tested or researched in Lethbridge or in any dryland conditions or is it just some, no, he doesn't know. That's the, that's the point we're trying to make. And not that I don't want to turn everything over to Pioneer, which I don't.
No, of course not. But the, the major thing on the variety trials, you just can't replicate the data that we do. Is it unbiased? I think it is. Because when that grower signs his name on a piece of paper that it was weighed there and under his conditions, that's pretty unbiased to me.
It's, but it's Pioneer against Pioneer against Pioneer. It doesn't, it, it doesn't tell the guy anything who, who has a seed salesman stop in his yard from another company. How does that corn stack up against Pioneer? See, that, that's, that's the issue. Well, yeah, we can see how yours stack up against your own, but how does yours stack up against anybody else's? How does the, how does the guy selling out of the back of his pickup, how does his corn stack up against Pioneer? Nobody knows.
I don't think he cares.
The, the guy selling it probably doesn't care, but the guy buying it should.
He should.
And if he had the data in front of him, or if he had enough data and this guy doesn't even show up, you just tell him to hit the road. That's, that's what we're, that's the sort of thing we're looking at.
I think that gets back, Steve, to the education issue, too. I mean, to be able to let folks know, hey, these, these short season dryland tests are being done in Lethbridge and disseminating that information is something that, you know, the council can really work on in getting outreach stuff done. Because we know that Extension's not doing outreach for us right now.
Well, and my biggest concern is, I don't want kids coming out of MSU crop sciences being ignorant on the crop, on corn or sugar beets or some of the crops that they don't see. You know, we do have corn in the valley now, but they don't have a tendency to look at the crop. at the crops they were growing, just growing further up the valley, the Yellowstone Valley, do you agree?
Right, right, it's, it's like Montana stops and dillings.
That's why we held this meeting out here.
You know, I think that's, I think that's, I think it's important, especially if any of these kids are gonna leave there, like my daughter will end up, she's applying to Grasspool and Purdue and, and Iowa State, is they gotta have some knowledge when they hit that, because they're gonna hit that and it's just gonna be like, wheat, what the heck is wheat?
Yeah.
It's just a rotational grass we use every once in a while. You know, that's, that's the attitude back there. But, or soybeans, you know, we're seeing an influx of soybeans as well, and I think education is a big part of this, if we do it.
I agree. Yeah, I, I think the biggest benefit would be dry land, corn production, agronomics. I know we, oh, we had a trial for having, we actually got some seed out. They were gonna do ESN trials versus straight urea. Well, they pretty well wiped that out, Vanville, killed the plants, but stuff like that, that's gonna be beneficial, especially if corn price jumps up. If we can, guys can know what to do, what's gonna help bulk yields and such, that's where I think getting the research funding, where I would stick would be driving my day around.
I hate, I'll, I'll make, make this point, that the ESN versus urea stuff on corn actually started with the sugar beet guys in Huntley, and they piggybacked corn onto that.
Yeah, this is dry land situation.
I, I know, but, but they piggybacked corn onto that, now it's spread up to there. I mean, so, I mean, it's all part of these, these smaller row crop deals, kinda gotta stick together and, and come up with their own research money, or they don't get any answers. And see, that started with, with beets, they included corn on it down there in Huntley, and now it's spread up to there with some dry land corn and some research along that lines. And I encourage the, the fertilizer tax committee to pick up some of that funding to do that, and I'm sure that's where the funding came from for that stuff up north, with the fertilizer tax committee to do that. And that's, I mean, we just gotta keep pounding on this stuff, or we don't get any answers for any of this, this row crop, these row crop questions. But it takes money.
And Dave, I mean, one of the, again, on the dry land rotational benefits, you know, with the Roundup Ready or, or any of the in-crop insect controls, it's, there's a, there's a lot of different avenues to look at. It's not necessarily just that this is another cash crop, but it's going to enhance something that's been in weed or barley for, you know, a hundred and twenty years. They've got some, they've got some serious weed problems that they need a rotational crop to take care of.
I think the dry land guys are gonna make out better than the irrigated guys out here. They're gonna pay less, you know, they're planting less, they're gonna pay less, and I think they're gonna make a lot.
I understand.
You know, the irrigated guys, we've been doing it a long time, we pretty well know what we're doing, you know, the variety trials, we like to see, but the dry land guys, I think are really kinda lean here.
I got a question, you know, you're talking about these varieties and what we're, what we're gonna be doing.
Dale?
Dale, sorry, I like a painting, the machine.
Okay, thanks Dale.
Where are you gonna limit, where are you gonna set your limits on what you're gonna test? As far as. We've got, we've got, in, in, in just the Yellowstone Valley, just the Yellowstone Valley itself, there's probably eight to ten different corn companies. Each one of those companies has, or, well, for dry land, for instance, a minimum of four at least varieties to, to test. Are you gonna test all of those varieties for that area? Now, now that's just for dry land, okay? And then you've got irrigated and silage, which you're looking at irrigated acres of different varieties for irrigated acres, just, well, I know for Pioneer, we've got twenty plus at least varieties, that's just one company, out of eight to ten different companies that would have about the same amount. Now, that's just grain acres, okay? And then silage acres is just as many. So, I mean, we are talking about, you know, on the sugar beet end, you know, we get, we get a lot of varieties that, that we test, but, you know, even before Roundup Ready, when we had five companies that we were, that were producing seed, there were still only three or four varieties that we would test, made it a lot of issue.
Oh, not true, not true. No, every, every year they were testing close to forty varieties.
Forty different varieties.
Forty different varieties.
Well, I guess they do, and they still do.
And, and, yes, and, and, of course, some of them get wiped out the very first year, and if they show potential, they run on.
Which brings up my next.
Of course, they, they were more brought in.
Right.
But there's, there's anywhere from forty to fifty every year going to the variety trials.
Right, okay. So, and, and the reason, and there was, and there's a checklist for the sugar beets on how to determine which varieties stay in the test and which ones don't. Who makes that determination? Where do we, what, what are the standards for those varieties?
Well, we don't have any of that yet, because right now, we don't even know if we have any money. Why wouldn't we go through all the work and step all that up, we don't even know if we're gonna have any money to do it?
I guess that's where I'm getting to, is, is, I don't know if there's enough money gonna be produced for the amount of research that needs to be done to make this happen.
Well, we, the way I would see this happening is that we've, we've gotta, we've gotta set our priorities, and, and we leave it up to the scientists to, to make sure that if there is something being done, that it is, it is done in a scientific method that, that will stand up. And then this group would look at it and say, you know, is that, is that a viable use of this money? Will that get us an answer that we need to get? Can we fund everything all at once? Probably not. So, is, if it is, say, dry land cultural practices, we would probably have to pick a limited number of varieties and run them in dry land circumstances in, in, like you said, more than one place, and be able to compare them. You can't, we can't run forty different varieties in five different locations, probably, with the money we're gonna have. Now, if we end up with, with enough money or whatever, I mean, we can, it, it's gonna depend on the answer you're trying to get, whether you can do it with a limited number of varieties, or whether you're gonna have to have every variety that is available. I mean, that's, 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 when we do a disease research in the beets, or we're, when we're looking at production practices or any of that kind of stuff, we'll, we'll pick out three or four different varieties that represent maybe different groups from different companies, and run them, and run them consistently for a few years to try to pick up long, you know, trends. And you, that, that's just, that's just the way you have to do it.
That's the first step, is the education. You can't pick out what variety trial thirteen years until you know how to do it, you know?
That's right. Most of that information, honestly, comes from us.
From the corn companies.
But on the variety trials, how are you gonna tell all these companies that we're only using four or five or six?
I'm not talking about the variety trials, I, you know, what we were just now talking about was, say, dry land cultural practices. It, it depends on whether it's a cultural practice issue, or whether you're, if it's gonna be variety trials, it'll be whatever you think you want to sell in the state, bring it to us, and we'll put it in, and we'll see how it does. We'll see how it compares to every other variety that got entered, and replicated however many times it has to be to be a scientific valid study. I mean, I let the, you know, the researchers, the guys that can, that, that know how that has to work.
And I think typically where that research starts is, you know, they would look at the Lethbridge varieties and say, hey, it looks like this was doing well there, let's test it here and see, you know, and that's how you'd pick your initial variety, if you, if you can only do a small scale.
Right.
So.
We're talking two different things, I mean, whether you're talking cultural practice or variety.
I'm more interested in that.
Maybe we don't do, maybe we don't do any variety trials, maybe it's all cultural practices for dry land the first couple of years.
I think that's where the emphasis should be, because there's no way you can do, you know, understand just benchmark, this company I own, and we have seed dealers in Montana, Wyoming, South Dakota, North Dakota, we do about between, I don't know, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty on-farm trials. You know, it's pretty significant. A lot of people don't realize how much is put in. Corn is a unique crop, because it's the biggest crop in the, in the country. The amount of research, Pioneer spends, what, about a billion dollars a year on research, but not just in developing hybrids, they also have ag research stations, which do different types of production trials, looking at plant population, looking at dry land, looking at, you know, X, Y, Z, whatever. So, it is a rather unique. But saying that, because the state does not have that many acres, are they gonna go up here and make a huge direct investment in this state? Probably not. You know, it was, were pretty amazing a few years ago that they donated, I think it was a hundred and some thousand to one of the ag buildings at Montana State, and it's been done outside the, outside the corn belt by this company, because they do want investment in the state. And, you know, again, they, they put a lot into it, I think Glenn is right on, on the education, it's, it's huge. I'm telling you, it's huge because of what I get the feedback from my daughter. It's not saying the professors are doing a poor job, they're not, they're very good, but they don't like to look at crops up this far up the state.
They all grew up wheat and barley guys.
Yeah. I mean, we can take them in the Galle Valley and show them there's about two thousand acres of corn there, is that because of them as she knows? Because, bite my horn, it's myself and Steve McDonald at Circle S Seeds, because we ran around, guys more, more consistent energy crop, they grow all the protein they want in that valley, but energy, to have top to bottom, front to back, in a silage pile, it comes from corn silage. And that's why we, we worked with growers and took them through the production aspects, and now it's a viable crop in the Galle Valley.
This is gonna be, in my opinion, it's a win-win situation. It's a win for a rotation, it's a win for the corn grower, and it's a win for the beater. So, everybody's gonna win out of the deal, I think.
I think one of the big things they tied in with the wheat guys, if you plant corn, you can get rid of the softy issues. They might not like growing something besides wheat, but if they do some rotations, that's gonna help them on everything. That's somewhere they could tie in the funding, some softy research, I would think.
Look, Matt, I get you.
Because what our guys in beets are seeing, they plant corn, you got about two years in that field, you won't see softies. There are pretty good rotations anyway, but if you just work corn in, that helps quite a bit. And that, I mean, that's just not a corn issue, that's just an overall rotation issue, I think the triangle is to be looking at, probably.
Well, Steve, and part of this money could be just to pull this kind of stuff that's already been done and, and already documented, and make it available to the Montana guy that wants to grow corn, dry land irrigated or otherwise. I mean, you know, it, I, I think, I think this industry has to start somewhere. Every, and, every industry in the state funds its own research to some extent or another. Even the mint guys back in twenty years ago were, were helping fund mint research being done up in Kalispell. I mean, we've been growing corn in this state for, since before I was a little kid, and still, there is not any corn money from the producers helping fund any research. We just sort of lived off the fat of the industry.
I think the largest number of corn acres ever in the state were back in the twenties and thirties. Because everybody that came here came from someplace.
Someplace that grew corn? Yeah.
There's about, I think there's amazingly about three hundred thousand plus acres. How many acres is there now? Do you have the acre number?
Well, she's pulling that out, I just wanna, I wanna make a comment about leveraging these dollars. And so, yeah, it might not be a lot of money now, but as Matt said, this is one of those things where you could reach out to Wheat and Barley and say, hey, we can get a researcher interested in corn, at least putting it in the ground, and we can get valuable information back from that, you know, by, by working with them, funding half of it, you know, and saying, say, we'll do two seasons here and, and see what the benefits are for us as, as corn producers and for you as beet producers.
Okay, it looks like in 2010, there was seventy-two thousand, eleven sixty-eight, twelve ninety-seven, thirteen hundred and eleven, fourteen hundred and eleven.
How do you spell?
So.
It doesn't have split up with the dry land acres and?
That's all yellow corn, so that, that, those numbers are both irrigated and?
And dry land.
We.
Also silage.
Yeah. Well, wait, 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 here, here we go. Irrigated corn, sixty-seven thousand, non-irrigated forty-four.
What would I excuse that?
Well, we had that number once, too.
Yes.
We had that average between the two.
And I think it's been important to, to get on the record how that, how the, how the assessment amount came about. What, they basically worked back from a number that they felt they could do meaningful research with, worked it back to the bag of seed, and then worked it further back to the individual seed itself, and added, you know, put that assessment together. So, based on, and that included some slippage saying assessments that you're not gonna receive, that type of thing. And I can't remember what the base number that the council came up with as far as what funding would be, would be meaningful, but if you extrapolate that three point six seven five cents out, or three, that three point seven five cents per hu, per thousand seeds out, times the number of bags of seed that were sold, that was an amount of money that the council felt they could actually do meaningful work with.
We're talking about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Roughly, yeah, I think that was about.
I think we, 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 no, I think we, we started somewhere, we were looking somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand, and we, we come up with this three dollars a bag and sought to see where that would kinda end up, minus the, their, their cut for management, and we come up with, right, then somewhere around between a hundred and a hundred and twenty thousand a year that this would probably generate. And then we'd see where it went after that. You know, is that enough to do anything? Is that too much? Does it need to get bigger? What does it need to do? We're all guys here that are gonna be paying this. And, you know, we, we wanna make sure that if we're gonna be paying it, we get something for our money, or at least somebody's getting something for our money, even if it's, like you say, the dry land guys might, might get more bang out of this than the irrigated guys. But irregardless, we gotta start somewhere, is my opinion. Heck, maybe we'll even get somebody, if we've got research going on, there'll be some interest at MSU teaching something about corn, so they've got somebody that can work as a, as an intern or whatever in the summer in, in the corn research program. I know in, in the, in the beet program, Barry has a couple, or did have, he's retiring this year, interns.
That couple in MSU?
Yeah. That, that, you know, that he employed during the summer in, in his research programs. And so, I mean, you know, it's, it's gotta start somewhere, but there's gotta be some money to start it, because you're not gonna get it out of the legislature. And odds are, the corn companies aren't gonna, aren't gonna fund anything like this, but if we, if we get something like this going, it's entirely possible that maybe some of these corn companies would say, you know, I'll kick in some of that, so that they don't have to, to come up and set up their own thing, if we're doing something that's actually meaningful, and they think we're doing some good.
To get them to invest, it's gotta be meaningful, and it can't be old moves.
Right.
You know, and it's not anything to do with, you know, gene research or anything that's production within the state.
No, we're, we're not trying to make hybrids, and we're not trying to come up with corn varieties, that's, that's, that's not it.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, to get companies, if you can get one company interested, you know the competitiveness, competitiveness of corn companies, money can flow, but they've gotta see that it's serious, number one. Number two is, they gotta see that there's a growth potential in acreage, most of the companies see that. Obviously, it's dropped off the last couple of years because of last year's growing, a perfect growing season everywhere in the country, except for here in western North Dakota. And the yields went up, it kinda busted the commodity price, but there, they do see the value up here, and understand, all these guys right here sitting next to me and wanting to tell them about the value in this state, if they would pay attention to it, on producing hybrids that meet our needs or our particular environments, because, I mean, we've got crazy environments here from, you know, whatever, twenty-three hundred above sea level all the way up to four thousand plus feet, and from very minimal in, in-season rain. So, they do recognize that, they do. We just have to be able to communicate to them and get, shake a few dollars, please.
Another thing about leveraging these dollars, too, is, is, you know, the researchers, especially at MSU, they use these state commodity checkup dollars to leverage to USDA to get funding for those folks. And so, it's not uncommon to see a grant that was fifty thousand dollars from Wheat and Barley be used to get three million dollars from USDA for, for the research. And Dave, that's how a lot of that equipment gets purchased, is through, you know, leveraging into the feds to get, you know, the bigger, the bigger grant dollars, so.
That, that's, the good researchers, the ones that have been and worked around for a while, that's how they do it. They, they get a lot of bang, bang for their buck, a little bit of money coming from a commodity group.
They get a lot of bang, bang for their buck, a little bit of money coming from a commodity group.
Another question. A negative question.
Always.
The state Iowa, you know, they've got a checkoff, of course, always do this. I'm familiar with Corn Growers Association, back as a member for several years. And theirs was put together by a corn grower, which was kind of the spin-off of Iowa Corn Growers, which was a spin-off by National Corn Growers. By law, so you take your corn in, you sell it in the elevator back there. By law, you can, they'll withhold their pennies for the checkoff. But by law, you could apply to have a, for a refund. And it's kind of a, it's not too passe, just to do that, but there is people who do that.
Right.
And I wonder just if that, by law, would happen to be the same here, anything like that?
It is...
Because, you know, if you're... Is it in there? Anyway. You know, if you're dedicated to the dryland program for the first few years, which is about three days ago. But if you're a big calculator of Yellowstone, and you grow your own silage and all that, you're gonna look at that as a $3 tax on the corn, when, so, I mean, is that, could that happen? Could then you end up with about 65% of the...
Well, we've definitely got, you know, two different cultural practices. And I think we're gonna have to try to make sure we try to address both of them as we go. So that everybody feels like they're getting something out of this. Because like you said, if it's just, if we are 100% devoted to the dryline stuff, we could lose half of our, half of our support. So we're gonna, we're gonna have to, everybody's gonna have to feel like they're getting something out of this.
Right. So, so the question, you know, is that, is it refundable?
Yeah, that's, and that's the law. Any commodity, and that's how, that's how every state has avoided the tax issue. You know, the tax argument is that all of these are refundable. So it's not a tax, because you can get your money back. All you have to do is fill out the form. And so, this is the same, this is the same scenario. So you would be able to get a refund. Now, when the calculations were done by the council at the last meeting as to where to set this, you know, we took that into account. I mean, with any commodity group, you're gonna have your certain set of refunders. And, you know, we were very, when we set that number, we were very, we were very negative as far as the amount of refunders that we calculated into that model. And so, we've built into that, that assessment dollar amounts, you know, an expectation that some people aren't gonna be happy and are gonna want their money back, so.
So I guess my, I'm saying is, if that was, if this whole thing passes, we probably gonna wanna make it look like, sure, we're gonna get something out of it.
Yeah.
Rather than just that, I guess.
There'd be a few growers that didn't essentially break the bank on the, on being able to fund stuff, because they buy a large lot of corn. They raise a lot, a lot of acres.
All good comments. Do we have any more?
Yeah, one thing, just kind of, kind of a general, you know, I guess the way I look at it is, is we're, you know, there's a lot of Pioneer representation here. And I don't think we're against this. We just realize how much, I mean, you know, Dave and I are kinda on the bottom end and Glenn are kinda on the bottom end of this, on the research and development of these, of hybrids and disease packages and all that kinda stuff. But we still see it, and we see how vast it is. So I guess our biggest concern is, is the money gonna be worth it? Yeah, I mean, if it's viable, if it's something that we can use, I don't think we have a problem with it at all. I mean, you know, that's not why we're here. We're just, we just, we just see our end of it, that, you know, there's so much that just pioneered us. And I know what Cal does, and I know these other corn companies do. And, and, you know, and how much money they invest into, into this. And just making sure that this is gonna be, be worth doing. And if it is, that's great. I mean, you know, I don't think anybody sitting over here is gonna be against it if it's, if it's something that we can all use.
Absolutely nobody from Pioneer is against research.
No.
Nobody. That's what we're here for.
Here's an example, two different examples. Just in the last two or three days, I had a guy who's been buying corn from me, come to me just Saturday and say, wow, I've been feeding barley all these years. I've fed corn this, yeah. He just loves it. But then there's a couple of guys that have said the same thing. And, so I can build on that. See, I'm in an area that there's very little corn grown. So if I can educate the people on the benefits, well, it's gonna benefit Pioneer.
Oh, I agree.
Benefit me as a dealer, it'll benefit the beater.
I agree. And there's, you know, there's certain silage varieties that have a better nutritional value too, you know? Which is only part of, like Kim says, you know, by the seed companies. Well, if that same data is through the state, you know, that's only gonna be beneficial for the producers and growers. So, I mean, it's not a bad thing. It's just that, I guess that was our biggest concern about coming down here was that it was, that there was gonna be enough money to make it feasible and make it worth.
And, you know, we don't know if it is. We, we, it's just a starting, we were, you know, had some discussion with Ken Kephart and Barry Jacobson, both about, you know, how much money does it take to try to get something started? And that $100,000 number seemed to be a fairly common answer to, you know, get the ball rolling. How much, how much that gets leveraged into extra money that comes on, comes with it is a big question mark. The right researcher can turn it into a lot, or a couple researchers. The right projects, I mean, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to come up with the right, with the right projects to get some, something, you know, going right away. So that, so that, you know, we don't fund three duds in a row. Because that, you know, then we'd just be dead. Yeah. With that little of money, and I don't wanna belittle that amount.
No, it's not much.
Yeah. The only thing that you could really do is use existing equipment that the farmers already have, growers already have. Because there's no way you can buy a planter for that.
Well, and the experiment stations already have plants.
Yeah, Ken has one.
Yeah.
I don't know if Sydney does anything with corn or not.
But are they gonna truck that around in northern Montana?
Well, that's, that's what they do, they do with the goddamn beet planter they've got.
Right. But is it a no-till planter?
Oh, probably not.
Probably not. And that's, if we're gonna go into the dryland end of it, we have to have a no-till planter. You know, and the technology is changing so fast.
So maybe Pioneer donates a no-till planter to help them out with their research.
I don't know if 51% of these...
See, 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 see how that works? You know, hey, we wanna do all this stuff. You got anything to help us out with? Well, we've got this no-till planter that's not big enough for North Dakota.
A lot of the companies do have funding for public projects. If you approach it properly.
But you have to have seed money to start it.
Right.
You have to be able to pay some scientist somewhere to get the ball rolling and come up with a viable project that's worth funding and worth getting other people on board.
All right. Again, I come back to the education, because the technology and corn planners is a little bit more elaborate than in the air drill used for Wheaton. It's changing so fast that we need to educate the extension service and MSU, get them up there first before we really start rolling forward on that. Because when you start talking variable rate seeding, you know, here's the man right here next to me. He spends more time working with guys on variable rate. What's that? Well, it's depending on what field conditions are. If you're on the top of the hill or at the bottom, whichever one is more productive, you may up your planting rate on certain parts of the field and not on others. To really simplify it, you can probably...
Smarter seed placement.
Smarter seed placement, fertilizer placement. You know, but I think we've gotta get the extension guys, because a lot of the extension people, if they have questions, they'll, if they see us, they usually ask us, because they're not getting that information. So I'm big on education, guys. But it's gonna be utilized. We gotta get people at top, up in snub, and then bring in the rest.
And we can, we can bring in the MSU extension people to help pull some of that information together and get it out to their county agents. I mean, you know, they're short of money too, you know, so it's...
And maybe that's what the, what the first year focuses on. It says you have to spend all of the checkoff dollars in that first year. So if you spend a quarter of them in the first year, do an education and outreach, that second year, when the money comes in, you've got, you know, 175% of what you're talking about today, which is a couple hundred thousand, which can go a little further, so.
I have a feeling the better we get at growing corn, the more this is gonna be. You know, on the dryland, this guy's got this great corn crop, two years in a row. His neighbor's gonna be right there, wanting my seed from whoever sold it to him. And I foresee these dollars going up in the future, and with more education out there. So we're gonna see more corn in the future. I think so too.
And that's why the department got behind us when we started hearing that from this region, you know, so.
The main reason I agreed to be on this is, over the last 30 years I've been involved in the fertilizer tax committee and in the research committee for the beet growers. And I've seen an awful lot of money spent on projects, more so with the fertilizer tax committee, because that's all Wheaton Barley money. And about every five or six years, the same guys come in and they wanna re-study how much nitrogen it takes to grow winter wheat in Hallow. And they get all done, and they might take a break for two or three years, and boom, they're right back at it again, the same project, do the same goddang thing again and again and again. And I just didn't want this to be one of those research deals where that kinda thing happened. Granted, I'm, I'm gonna be around for another 10 years or so. But if we can get this off on the right foot and get the right people in place, then it should function like an efficient research entity should. Okay. Now, this goes forward, who votes on it? Corn growers?
So the, what will happen is, we will get, we've got the list of everybody who's planted corn in the state according to FSA in the last two years. Anyone who's eligible to vote, they're listed, the eligibility requirements are listed on the referendum. And so, you have to be an individual over the age of 18, personally engaged in growing or producing corn within the past two years, and a Montana resident. So we will send a referendum to every person that we can possibly find who has grown corn within the last two years. Now, there's been some confusion in the past over who's required to vote, and I will tell you, or who's allowed to vote. Because the definition of producer or grower in the statute includes corporations and other entities. But when you come to the statute on referendums, it says an individual who is a producer or a grower. So to me, that means a person over the age of 18 who's actively engaged in growing corn. So if you guys, you guys obviously know who you sold seed to. To the extent that you can tell us, we'd ask. So we can make sure it gets out to everyone who, who has the right to vote in the referendum. And then the vote count is based on the, on the returned referendums. So it's not based on a majority of the ones we send out. It's based on a majority of the ones we receive back, so. That's how it works.
Okay, now, would this advisory council stay in place, or would there be a vote? I had that question from somebody. Nothing personal against anybody up here.
I'm already two meetings over my limit.
Yeah.
I had somebody call from Beager, and they asked, would they dissolve the council and then redo on a vote?
So we have, well, we have the petition. And so, the way this, so under the, under the current law, we've got a petition. And if the new law were in place today, the petition would serve the same purpose. We've got a petition from 38 folks who are engaged in growing corn in the state of Montana, which would create the council. So when this was created back in December of '14, I think we said two of you are on a one-year term? Is that how we staggered it?
Three on one, three on...
Three. Three are on a one-year term. So three of the folks who are currently on the council are up for either reappointment or replacement in December of 2015. And so, we staggered the first year. So we're replacing a certain number of them every, every year, or every two years. I can't remember exactly how it was set up, so.
Every two years.
Every two years.
Okay, how many are there?
Six.
Six?
Yep, sorry.
So next winter, three of us could either be replaced or reappointed. And if I understand this correctly, it's a governor appointment, is that correct?
This one is a, this one is a director appointment.
Director appointment.
Yeah.
So it's not like you can campaign for this spot or anything.
Suppose you could, I don't know. There's really only one guy who votes though.
Yeah. Only one guy that has the say. But if, I, if, if a group of people had an issue and they wanted a certain person on there, I suppose all they'd have to do is get a bunch of signatures and send it to the Department of Ag and say, we'd really like this guy to be on there, and we don't care whose place he takes.
What the, what the director likes to do is have a pool of applicants. So in case one of, one of the guys who's on the committee right now decides like they just can't make the commitment anymore, that opens up the position. And so, the director likes to have a pool of applicants to pull from. So if that were to happen, then he would interview some folks and say, you know, what do you think you can bring to the committee? And then make his appointment based on that. And so, we're always accepting applications for when those vacancies do, do open up, so. And they do it, I mean, they happen unexpectedly. We lost somebody from, from the pulse committee this year. Nobody saw that coming, so, yeah.
So would there be research, like feasibility of an ethanol facility?
I think what we talked about one time was having a researcher submit a proposal, and then we review it and decide, you know, maybe there's only enough money for three different people to do work with it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, just like Dale said before, none of us are for and against this, at this point. You know, we have to play the devil's advocate. And because we're the ones that are gonna end up taking the brunt of it.
Yeah, yeah. You guys are gonna collect it, and you're gonna hear about it.
That's right.
You're a bunch of them.
No, we're all for the, if you guys do research, it's gonna promote growth of corn in the state. That's gonna help us out, yeah. And we, I think Pioneer will kick in some, if it's on agronomic stuff. They'll definitely go, eat seeds, that kinda trials and stuff. But it's just, we get, well, say, in North Dakota, they'll submit hybrids into the mega plots. There's one plot where a number just tanks for some reason, maybe the Coons got it or something. And somebody will get stuck on that. And it's a good hybrid, there's nothing wrong with it, but one plot it failed. And we just, that's why we kind of avoid it in those big plots right now. You have about six hybrids, you can get a good, good long strip of good yield on it. But there's definitely a need for agronomic advancement. That is definitely key.
Well, it doesn't matter what the research is. It's gotta, it's gotta be set up right. So that, so that if everything, when you're, when you're done, you've got meaningful results. I mean, if, if the design is flawed to start with, you're screwed right out of the gate. And there's no point in even spending a nickel on it. When I was on the Wheaton Barley committee, we had one guy, two years in a row, he'd come back. We'd funded him, well, I didn't get any results this year for this or that. Next year, oh, I didn't get any results this year. Third year, he'd come back, sorry, you don't get any money this year. I mean, that, I mean, you just can't keep funding that kinda thing.
Well, we've also talked about reviewing their, the researcher's progress and making evaluation.
Well, you have to every year.
But during the season, I think, we've worked out. No, I'd be good, a season update, make sure they're actually following through what their research was.
That's something the department does, so.
That's two meetings a year.
Big Dale just volunteered for your seat.
I asked her specifically, how often would this be? Oh, probably one meeting a year. Well, when do you think of it? Oh, probably in the middle of the year. Here, I am planting barley right now, here, I sit. I guess I'm not planting.
It's too bad they couldn't capture the value of the amount of corn that comes into the state. That's the real dollar change. Yeah, I don't see any way to do that.
No. And the reason, the biggest challenge is that, you know, typically the state... No, and the reason, the biggest challenge is that, you know, typically, the states have agreements between the state lines where we're gonna assess it once, and we're gonna assess it where it was grown, so.
I'm all sold out of corn, and I haven't sold one bushel to an L B.
I mean, that's the way it's, that's the way it is. Always is, should be. The colonies, the feedlots, they all... What about, say, you got somebody parting up the North Dakota wine, they plant some in Montana, they live in North Dakota.
Buy their seed from the North Dakota guy and bring it over and plant it?
Yeah, say, they got set quartered up, is that gonna be something guys, they're gonna go after?
Yeah, 'cause again...
But the grower technically, he's not gonna be able to vote on this either.
Here's the way it was written, is that the assessment is based on seeds sold to be planted in Montana, and so, to the extent that the seed dealer in North Dakota knew that he was carrying across state lines to plant it in Montana, then the assessment would be out. So, that's a tough, Matt, you probably hit on probably the toughest one to enforce.
Well, 'cause we've got a dealer, Bee Jack, who reparts some of Montana wine, but he's not gonna be able to vote on this stuff either, so I'm just wondering how that would work.
Right, yeah.
I would say there'll be some calculated loss.
Yeah, and he can refund, if he does get assessed for stuff that...
Yeah, he could always get it back.
So...
Even if he didn't get to vote on whether he got to pay it in the first place or not.
I would think they'd call visit to collect off somebody from Wisconsin, someone that had a backup.
What color's the pickup?
I mean, just how you have the ability to enforce that, many states over.
Yeah, we do, I mean, 'cause they've come into Montana to do business, and so they've availed themselves, purposefully availed themselves of the laws of Montana, which means they are here and subject to our laws. And so, even if they made it back, it might be difficult to serve them process, but if they came back, we could definitely do something about it.
And they'd have to have a Montana seed dealer's license.
Under our law, they have to have it, whether they'd always do, so.
Once you upgraded that last year, correct?
Yeah.
Did you say, hasn't it touched in 2010?
It hasn't been updated on their website, assuming there's gotta be somebody who can contact to get it.
We're working, yeah, exactly.
Part of that eight percent skin's down right now, they haven't collected a dime.
We're working internally on making sure our website is more responsive to agency activities. We've actually, somebody's been assigned internally to really work on that. So, just because it doesn't appear on the website doesn't mean that that's the most update, up-to-date list we have. I'm gonna point it out to those folks downstairs and say, "Hey, you know, that list up there is 2010, do you have a more current one? We'll get it posted," so.
What's a fine for something like that?
Off the top of my head, Dave, I don't, it's probably in this book somewhere, but I don't know off the top of my head.
You know, it's easier to catch these guys if you call them and tell them.
It is, you know, and a lot of times, what we do is, we issue a stop-sale order, you know, and if they violate the stop-sale order, then it becomes a crime, so.
The seed gets impounded.
Yeah, in the ground.
The Department of Ag usually looks at the Western Ag Report, and they always see a list of our guys serving around ads, but I know they've called up before because they had somebody else that was using my company's name, and they went after them for advertising in the state, which they couldn't, right?
So there may be some fringe benefits to you guys for having to do all the paperwork, or the accounting, anyway. I guess all the paperwork involves writing the check.
Well, I'm sure the state's gonna want some documentation, which, if you're in the seed business, you don't like to give up anything to anybody, because it's very competitive and very protective. So is this the referendum that's gonna go out to all the growers, then? This one here, or is it gonna be revised with a little more explanation of what these dollars are gonna?
We'll reassess this, I mean, this is a draft at this point, and so after the department has received all public comment, then there'll be a discussion as to what needs to be in here. This is what we felt, you know, kind of generally gave everyone an idea as to what the money was gonna be spent on. Statute really only requires the rate and how it's gonna be collected, which wasn't enough in this situation, we didn't feel, that's why it's two pages long. So, we'll take the comments that we receive into consideration, if there's concerns that we think can be cleared up in this referendum, we'll add that stuff to it, so.
I'm gonna have to have another meeting.
It's gonna be four.
So I guess where we're at from here is, we've gotta wait for the end of this comment period to get over, and there'll probably be some more comments coming in one way or another, then we'll have to probably get together and revise this referendum and send it up, and it'll be strictly a yes or no, either it passes or it doesn't pass. And if it doesn't pass, it's probably just gonna be a done deal. I don't see any point in trying to do it twice, I mean, either people want to see something like this, or they don't. I know the first time I talked to Dale about this, I got the impression from him that I was just wasting my frickin' time. Maybe he's changed his mind just a little bit.
It has to be like it's the way it's presented, because if it comes across a three bucks a bag, it's gonna cost you, you know, no, it's gonna be charged to the seed dealer, what the hell.
I knew this was gonna happen. The average person knows that if it's gonna be charged to the seed dealer, they're gonna be paying it at the end.
And ultimately, yeah, the statute's written, so it's the producers' payment collected by you, that's the checks and balances.
And that's what it's to propose, so on a line... So on an invoice, it would have to have, you know, a hundred bags, three hundred times three for a checkoff. It would be a separate line item, it's what would have to be on the invoice.
I don't think it would have to be, but I think that's the best practice, you know? I mean, I guess you could raise the cost of the seed and pass it on, but I think the best practice is to say... Yeah, I think the best practice is to have it line item bound.
Okay, then, you got one guy that buys those other bags, so I wanna refund them.
You're out of it. You're out of it. He comes to us.
He's the farmer refunds, applies for refund, yes.
Through us.
You're out of it.
Yep.
So the three bucks, you've collected it, you've sent it to them, if he wants it back, they send it back. Maybe he wants it back again.
Nope, nope.
I sent it directly to him, yeah.
If you're ready, I'll move back and get it.
Kind of like the fuel tax.
Okay.
I mean, they collect it on every gallon of road fuel sold, and the farmer gets to take a sixty percent exemption or whatever, then they gotta apply to the Department of Transportation to get their own money back. This would be the same kind of... Am I correct?
You are absolutely correct.
Obviously, our concern with seed dealers is being accused of raising the price of the unit, why can't you just pay it four, so add it to it?
Tell them, "Call Marty." She'll set up a meeting so they can talk to Kim.
And that's why we have to be specific, if it does pass, that this is what it's for, it's a reinvestment into your business.
That's why, that's how we'd like to see it, yeah. I mean, just like with the wheat and barley from the commodity dealers, I mean, that's always a separate line item on there, it's the, whatever they're charging these days, one percent or something, two percent, I think.
Granted, the seed dealers are gonna be the main salesman for this whole deal, because you're gonna be the one talking to every corn grower there is, and you're gonna be one hearing about the three dollars and whether it's good or bad. And so if you have a negative opinion of it and pass that on, they're gonna want their money back. If you can present it in some kind of a positive light, where it will probably do them some good, they're probably not gonna want their money back. That's assuming it gets passed in the first place. I myself have doubts whether this thing will pass. I think the gut reaction from ninety percent of the farmers out there is gonna be just a "Hell, no," and that'll be the end of it. I think so. How many people are here? Are bothered to call? I mean, the average person doesn't want their input cost to go up, period, so. Yeah, I mean, you know, you take three dollars on, what, a $250 Vegas seed or whatever it is, I mean, it's next to nothing. Shouldn't even register on their radar, really, but the average person, you know, even if it's a buck's, gonna say, "No." I might have you check the little dollar deal on your taxes for funding political elections. I don't, I don't want them to have any more of my money, so I'm guessing this is probably gonna roll down the same line.
Although I would point out, there is a checkbox for ag in Montana schools, which should be checked.
There's checkoffs that I'm paying, I didn't even realize were there. I didn't realize I paid a fertilizer checkoff. Um, Steinleiser told me, he was on the board. I didn't even know it existed.
So they don't line item it, it's just...
Yeah, it's just part of the fertilizer price. The average guy doesn't even know it's there.
Yeah, the problem with our business is, man, those guys notice fifty cents change on that bag.
Don't you give them a discount, or you give them the price, and tell them you'll knock twenty-five dollars off the bag, so that they feel better about it?
On the record.
State your name.
But that's the concern, it has to be worded very specifically, very clearly. If there's any haze in there, guys are immediately gonna say, if there's somebody, they're immediately saying, "No," but others will be, they will be...
Yeah, we'll see what the referendum is.
The point you made, Kim, was that, you know, initially, when I heard about it, it was, hopefully, don't need that, same thing, we're talking about the growers, and you were saying about most of the growers, but now, you know, after talking with you and looking at some information, talking with Mark Wolgo about it, too, and kind of throwing numbers around a little bit, seeing what is a possibility of what this money could be used for, is something that I think could be useful. So, maybe, you know, initially, you know, maybe more education about this referendum going out to the growers before we have a vote, a little bit more information on what this is, what this could possibly cover, and what are the benefits, you know, if that's something that...
I was kind of hoping that's what today would be, you know, that there'd be enough people here to get educated about it, and then go home and talk about it, but, wrong day.
So, we have to keep this open for another half an hour, doesn't mean you guys have to sit here and talk with us for another half an hour.
Carry green beer?
We'll be till out of Montana in fifteen minutes.
So, yeah, so we'll be here for another thirty minutes, but we can... Peggy, if you have any comments, too, we're happy to hear from you. And if you, if for whatever reason, you're not able to communicate with us, and you have comments, please email them to me. I sent you the referendum via email, so you can just reply to that email, and we'll make sure that your comments become part of the record as well. So if no one's gonna make any further comments right now, I'm gonna mute the mic for the time being.